Comment on agenda items. I see we have a couple people here. No? No problem. Nope. You're just gonna sit there and listen? Oh, okay, Jesse is going to comment. Oh, here for item one. Okay. Let's move on to item one.
Mayor, real quickly too, the video, our videographer asked me to remind everybody to make sure that when you speak, that you speak into your mic with the little green light on.
Thank you.
It doesn't just muffle your voice if it's not on. They don't hear you at all on TV if your mic's not on. So if you want your comments heard, make sure you, I'll try to remind you too. If you don't want to be heard, just leave your mic.
Okay, let's move on then to item number one, urban renewal report.
Well, hello council. My name is Jesse Hill. I sit on the board member of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, also known as Renew Wheat Ridge, and today we're here to present our 2013 annual report. A little memo on it originally was brought up due to some legislation going on, and the board also thought it would be a good idea to put together a report that not only could present to you as a council, the activities we've been going on for the last year, but also to the community as a whole. What does the renewal authority have? And something also that can say, sit up on our archives in city hall and on the web, and also give a little more insight on what we do, the projects that happened that might span the memory of a, you know, meeting, or might span the memory of even your terms here. A lot of our projects last for many, many years, from current idea to falling through, and most of the plans themselves are decades old. So this is meant to be, to work with it, and we ratified it at our last meeting on, last Tuesday, I believe, so. The council, the authority was formed in 1977. I'm gonna skip over a lot of the details here, but a lot of times when it's presented to the community, you know, we're out and we say, "Well, the renewal authority eliminates and prevents the spread of blight by investing in public improvements that are funded by tax increment financing, TIF." That is a great thing we do, but we also do a lot of other items and kinda included that in a list here. And I guess I'd like to remind all of you, council, those are some of the tools that we have as a board and authority to help implement the plans, and those plans are passed by city council. And a lot of times a previous council or amended by you. So we are ideally the implementation arm of the renewal plans that exist out there, so. For 2013, we did have a great and a busy year. Our main focus was the marketing and blight removal at Town Center North. That's the property over at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth. The main items in that was a variety of land sales and developments. It included, included sales for the apartment buildings that are currently up there for senior housing. Going along with that, there was a series of renegotiating loans that had happened with it. We had acquired the property. We had to do a lot of improvements to it. You know, we didn't know how long or where even that project was going when it started. So as the time came, and I think some of you might have seen it, renegotiated with loans and also some payoffs that occurred with that. We recyclerly back in 2013, we completed the TIF on that. That's good, so they've been funded back, and the tax increment financing from that will now go into the renewal authorities as we develop a plan in the future on how to fund the, to use those funds in future blight removal, so. And besides that, a lot of land sales up there. It was a busy year, and negotiating and trying to bring in new tenants. It was a little more difficult than we thought to sell off some of those pieces of property. Market demographics was a big thing. We had people come in and say, "Hey, you know, we'd like to do it, but we really don't want to pay you anything," you know? And that's a tough one for us to swallow out there because we, as a community, have invested a lot of money in that corner and currently under contract with the developers, Wozie Partners, for some units up there, and it's always in an ongoing situation. So we'll hopefully see that finish up in this year. Other notable projects of 2013, Perrin's Row, that was a series of apartments over on Thirty- Town Homes, you're correct, sorry. They're on Thirty-Eighth and Dupuy using tax increment financing from the property tax, which is a little different from what we normally do. A lot of times our TIFs are generated from a sales tax revenue. So that was another one that the board worked through quite diligently. And I guess that would be said about any of our projects. We definitely just don't stamp them through. We try and research and look through all we can at what's there and what's best for the community and if there's some possible negotiations that can occur, so. Moving forward to 2014, wow, we're halfway through the year, but the main things we really focused on was Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. That was a big project. I think, again, you guys were aware and put some definite work into it also. Have some financing for the development there, 2.4 million. Also, we'll be handling distribution around the $1 million economic incentive for that developer too, moving forward. Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth was another one. You know, starting out, we haven't seen any approvals for any TIFs come through for that, but the work we have done and focused on was acquiring some property to eliminate, I don't know, as a dry cleaner there. And so it was acquiring that property, cleaning it up, and kinda working through that development. And overall, that's, let's see, did I hit on the major points, Mr. Art?
You caught them.
Well, I definitely would recommend, you know, feel free to ask me any questions at the end of this. It's something that I try and bring, I don't know, to the board, a report that's find valuable. Hopefully you find a value. If you'd like to see additional things, let me know because we'd love to build on this in the future and any way too, we can improve the public process because I think it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. That was pretty informative. I see we have a council question here, Mr. Jatulio.
Thanks, Jesse, for coming in. The question that I had, and could you clarify for the public, because I'm sure people are watching, is that what property actually Urban Renewal owns at Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth? There's a lot of rumors and innuendos that the city owns the entire site. Could you just explain who owns the property and what the city and Urban Renewal is involved in as far as the owning ownership?
Absolutely. There was a single parcel, Yukon and Thirty-Eighth there. It was, you know, one of these properties that gets stuck in interesting ownerships out there. So it was purchased from the Bank of Denver. We're almost, you know, knowing the previous owners that disappeared and left us a nice environmental mess. So the renewal authority purchased that property and is in continuous environmental remediation of that piece. The plan is in the future to sell that off to developer without losing, I guess, you know, at a fair market price, and we've had a series of grants that have helped out with doing some of that environmental remediation in the meantime because it is a big risk to take on for development, and that's one of your classic examples of blight that exists in a Urban Renewal Authority area, of having an environmentally contaminated area. Who wants to touch it without knowing those risks? So as an authority, we're able to do that a little more and bring in some tools to cover those finances and see that be remediated.
And then the other question I had is, you know, over the last few years, the Urban Renewal Authority has had a TIF financing for half a dozen projects, and really all those projects have been non-controversial. They've gone through the city council, the public with little or no acrimony. So I would encourage you to keep that open and public process going, which has gone really well. The main thing I think that Urban Renewal has to be careful of is that, I think you're getting to the position where you can be a little bit selective, and you can say, "We're not gonna give a TIF for this type of project or this type of project because it's not what the community or the Urban Renewal Authority or the city needs right now." So I would encourage you to be a little bit more demanding on the future projects just because of the nature of the beast. We're growing and moving in the right direction. So thank you for all your work on that, too.
Absolutely. The goal would be to, you know, eliminate or remove a blight, and the easiest way to improve the public process and to continue that involvement is to have us get these plans in earlier, you know, so that we can review them, so that we have more time out there, and that's probably the, you know, best way to really get that, I don't know, full involvement of the board and community that we can see.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jesse, for coming in. Nice report. Can you explain for me and for perhaps our viewing audience on Wheat Ridge Recycleri, we made a TIF agreement with them in 2007, and that's been paid off early. And we have a note in here that the, the project proceeds continue to be received by Renewal Wheat Ridge for an additional 19 years. Can you sort of explain to us how the, sort of what the proceeds, what they're talking about, and what, what happens to the money when it goes to Renewal Wheat Ridge?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll give a first stab at it. I'll let Steve or Patrick fill in any blanks. But when the project really was first initiated, there'll be a baseline time set and also the value of current tax increment, taxes brought in at that point. And so the beginning of the project, we say, "Wheat Recycleri, you've brought in this baseline level." Once you start implementing these improvements, the, you know, ideal scenario is that we are now seeing additional tax revenues come in to fund those items. So say if you, I'm just using round numbers, say they had a standard, you know, $100,000 of tax revenue, did these improvements, next year, we did $100,000 of improvement. Next year, $10,000 additional comes in on tax increment. That's what's gonna go back to refund, and one way to have this happen, there's a variety out there, but to say refund that initial investment in there. We'll continue doing that until that $100,000 investment was paid off. At that time, the, the initial TIF plan, or I guess the, I guess, TIF project would be financing for 25 years usually, and so when you have that extra time, those additional revenues will come into further, it's not just that property, it's the surrounding area and properties around it. So we'll be developing a plan to, to invest those back in the community continuing on forward, to continue eliminating blight within all the blight area, you know, possibly in that area or other areas around Wheat Ridge.
That would be within the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor urban renewal plan area. The monies could be utilized.
So are those funds that are coming in from a successful TIF project? Because we've, we've repaid the, the tax increment that we had, that we had been looking for, the business had, had repaid that. So those funds are, that tax increment continues to accrue to Renewal Wheat Ridge and is then available for other TIF projects in the neighborhood, the city? Is there a geographical boundary on that, next door, or what's the?
So by law, just to get back up, by law, an urban renewal, once we start the clock on receiving TIPs for a period of 25 years, so we paid off the Wheat Recycleri project early, so we'll continue receiving those funds in. That revenue that's received in must be used within that urban renewal plan area, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue project, for any public improvements that the board deemed necessary. It can be to assist a TIF project. It could be just to do improvements along that project area.
Thank you.
Ms. Wood. Regarding Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, I continue, and I'm sure others do also, continue to get phone calls and emails. Could you go over in general what the next steps would be on that property? So what the next steps coming up might be?
You know, as a board, as we see it, it's, you know, just from what we see, and that's, we expect to see a TIF application come in from a developer that would include plans in there, public, you know, there might be a request in there, assuming it's for TIF, for public improvements and other things that might eliminate blight. Steve probably can hit on exactly how and what that might look like or timeline, but as a board, we, nothing has come in front of us yet, so we would expect something.
And if you remember the process we went through with the Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, that center there with the substantial modification, this project will have to go through that same process of the substantial modification to them. So it'll go before the planning commission to make sure it adheres to the comprehensive plan. It'll come with a public hearing before the city council, and ultimately, Urban Renewal Authority will approve a TIF request. We have not received anything, so at this point, we don't even have a request on the table from the applicant on that. We haven't seen a performer on there. So at this point, we can't really speak anymore to that until we have an actual project.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Jesse, thank you. I'm just curious about this $55,000 expense for professional services. I presume that that has to do with the remediation of the blight at the cleaners?
Actually, more on the aspects of our legal professional services. Our board is very lightly staffed, and majority of our time and effort spent negotiating contracts, deals, my questions, and other board members, and whatever else we need to keep moving an illegal and abiding path of acting as the renewal authority. So that's the majority of those professional services is our legal counsel.
No more questions? Mr. Jatulio.
It has an application, I was under the impression that on Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, that application had been filed within the staff?
With the city.
So is it quasi-judicial now?
It is. They've submitted, the applicant has submitted a conceptual site plan, which is a first step, and so it is, it is in a quasi-judicial state at this point.
So just for everybody, so council people cannot talk to each other or the public about it, but public can talk to public, and we can talk to staff about it, but as a public and, well, they, public can talk to us, but we can't really respond back. That's, that's been the...
The next, the next step that council will see on that project would be a subdivision plat to divide the property up, and I don't have a date on that yet. There's still, we're still back, back and forth on comments and referrals out to outside agencies. So that would be the next step with, to answer Genevieve's question to, to city council.
Well, and the question I wanted to bring up is, in general, subdivision plats, you know, Mr. Stark and I were talking about this, in general, subdivision plats come from the city council or planning commission, and it's not a rezoning, and they're very difficult in general to deny if they follow law and rules. And if, what happens if a council denies a subdivision plat is generally a lawsuit? And usually, the city can lose the lawsuit, generally speaking, if subdivision plats are not approved by council. Is that true?
It's, it's, yeah, very true. It's, it's a very technical document that, that council really doesn't have a lot of discretion in, in voting down unless they're not meeting those technical requirements.
So the only two areas that we'll see probably is a subdivision plat in general, if the property's already being, and the TIF application. Does a TIF application go?
TIF application will just go to the Urban Renewal Authority. What Steve mentioned, similar to Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, we have to amend the Wadsworth corridor urban renewal plan to allow for TIF to start. So that city council will see that, but you're not actually approving the actual TIF agreement. The Urban Renewal Authority approves a TIF agreement.
So we didn't, we didn't approve the TIF on Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. We approved the?
You amended the plan to allow for the clock to start.
Now, that could be denied, and that's not, that's not necessarily a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Yep.
Good evening. It's okay. Ms. Davis has joined us. Are we through with our discussion on this? Do we need any action from us? No, it's just so that we got a review, and thank you very much.
Yeah, information only, and I guess I'd like to thank council. We're sending us some great board members so far, and if we have any more vacancies, keep selling them. We're a diverse group of businessmen and women and engineers and, I don't know, all kinds of good, good people. So we've got a good, solid board, and we're excited for new projects coming up here in the year and, and future. So thanks again.
Thanks, Jesse.
Joyce, real quick, I just wanted to extend a thank you to Jesse, too, because Jesse, you know, I know this was one of your things that you wanted to get done, and so I want to thank you on that, and thank Steve for, for the help as well. But Jesse is a valuable member of the board, even, you know, as we're, he keeps us straight on finances, and he asks hard questions, so I also want to thank Jesse as well.
Item number two, the discussion on the council tablets, possibility for council members to receive tablets. Did you want to discuss that, Patrick?
Correct, yeah, sure. Michael Stanky is here, our IT manager. He is going to prevent some, or present some options to council. We've been, you know, talking about this for quite some time, and finally had some time on an agenda to bring it back, but Mike's been, been prepared for, for months on this and has some information, so I'll let Mike take it away. Mike. Turn the light, turn the green light on.
Mike, hit the mic.
I have two documents, or actually three to give you, but I'm gonna leave the two more easy reading off to the side because that's gonna distract. What you really want to look at is this sheet that I'm gonna pass around, which is a comparison between the Surface 3 Pro- the Surface Three Pro and the iPad Air. Can you pass them over? Thanks. I also brought a couple of actual devices with me that I would like you to just touch and feel and hold. So, one is the iPad. It's not the Air, it's not the latest, greatest, but it was one generation back. The new iPad is a little bit lighter, but same dimension, and this is the new Surface Three Pro. So, most of you are, most people are very familiar with iPads. They're the very first tablet that was on the market, and now, everybody is catching up to what iPad used to have the big market share on. What we're looking at is, the Surface Pro is the recommended option for council, and the reason why is because, one, it's a Windows machine, so it really is, it has a detachable keyboard, and it really is designed to run office applications. So, on an iPad, we can't load Microsoft Office, the full version. We get readers and things to go on that, but not the full version. The iPad also is a little bit smaller screen. It weighs about the same as the Surface Pro. The Surface Pro is really the latest in technology. It's the third generation of this tablet from Microsoft. Like I said, it has a detachable keyboard, and it's, it's a twelve inch screen. It's really nice, resolution is great on it. And from an IT perspective, one of the biggest concerns I had with council having iPads was, there was really no way for me to manage what goes on your iPad. Do you have antivirus on your iPad? Do you, you know, all the things that you need to look up council agendas. The original discussion was, why are we using, why would we want to use iPads or any tablet? And it was to try to do paperless agenda packets, so that you could markup and do almost digital writing on your agenda packet documents. The technology with the Surface Pro Three has progressed enough where even internally within the city, our, our staff, you know, selected users on our staff and selected users in our IT division are testing these units out, and they are truly a desktop replacement. We see them as desktop replacements for people that need mobility and still want to have the look and feel of a Windows desktop environment. The price point between the two, the Surface is two hundred dollars more expensive than the Wi-Fi only version of the Apple iPad. However, I really believe that that two hundred dollars is really, when you look at what that iPad, that Surface Pro can do, is basically a really light tablet, laptop, and in about a month, Microsoft is releasing a docking station for it. So, for our internal staff, we use a lot of multiple monitors, because we've got spreadsheets up on one screen and, you know, others, Outlook and email up on another screen. We will be able to dock that tablet and hook up to two monitors, and like, for those users that have laptops today, we usually spend about fifteen hundred dollars to outfit a person with a laptop. The Surface Three Pro gives them the touch capability of a tablet, it's Windows, and they can take it and go. So, here in the city, we've wired the city for wireless access, Wi-Fi access. So, not only can our internal staff take their tablet to go, but they can have their email available in a full Outlook client anywhere in this facility, and also over at the rec center, and also over the Active Adult Center. Internally, my plan for replacement of laptops is there will not be replacement of laptops in the future. We're going to internally, in our staff, replace them with these Surface Pro devices. The docking station is two hundred dollars. The device itself is a thousand dollars, so you're looking at twelve hundred dollars. I'm still kind of saving three hundred dollars over a laptop, and it gives folks like Patrick and management the ability to use a tablet and just undock their stuff and take it, their office with them. So, for council's use, the way that we envision it being used is, we would set you all up with one of these, city issued. We would configure email using a full Outlook 2013 email client, no web mail or anything like that. And one of the neat features of the newer software of Exchange and Outlook is that as long as you have a Wi-Fi connection, you can have it at your home, you can have it at Starbucks, you can have it here, you will receive in real-time email, and you can respond in real-time in email. And there's no extra logins or anything to, to get that Outlook client to actually work. Tracy's not here today. We actually had her demo, demo one of our Surface Two, the first generation, which is kind of weird, Surface Two versus whatever, but she demoed the first one, and the feedback from her was really positive. The only downside that she said was, eh, the screen was a little bit small. So, this Surface Pro Three is much larger. It's, it's a twelve inch screen. It's almost the size of a full laptop, you know, a small laptop. So, I'm really excited to get this deployed in, in our organization internally, and if council wants to move forward this with, you know, deploying this technology, we have funds this year to do that.
Oh, Ms. Davis?
Mike, just one question. Coming from a, a business or an organization that has a lot of meetings and a lot of meeting packets, we use the Dropbox.
Yep.
And so, have you researched, is that your role as well, or are you just hardware role? But I, I'm wondering if, what we would use as far as a way to get the packets to us instead of having it on the internet. I think, you know, one of the easiest is, is using, I think, so Exempla, or they're not Exempla anymore, but the hospital uses the box, I think, because that's more security around, and then you can get the Dropbox that's not security. And those are all things that we could do on the Surface Pro?
Yes, absolutely. It's, it's like a desktop. It's like you're taking your desk with you. Now, one of the things that's, that's coming is, we're, we're due for a server upgrade here in the next little while, and we're going to be going to Server 2012R2. And what that allows me to do is, it allows me through a wireless connection securely to give people access to something similar to a Dropbox, but it's really a, a network drive.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's just that it is...
Like a shared drive.
Yeah, it's a shared drive, but you don't need to physically be connected to our network here physically in this building. It'll act very similar to Outlook where it's just a, you know, a drive letter on your computer, and you, as long as you have Wi-Fi access, and we give you permission to get to that folder structure, that folder, you'll just, you won't even have to log in or do anything. You just double-click on it and you're there.
And so, there'd be like a PDF that would say study session, June twentieth, or whatever it is.
It would probably be broken...
Or July twentieth.
Yes, it would probably be broken down, very similar to the way the city clerk has their agendas broken down right now in Laserfish online for public access, where it's, you know, by year or by month, and they would just dump their documents in there for you to access.
Because I think that's a lot easier than having to go on the internet and then go on and dig and find it. If there's just one place, we could just boop, boop, boop.
Yeah. Right now, the way that it works is, it, they are on the internet, so you have to go to our website, and you have to click on the link and you download the document.
And I have to put in my iBooks.
And you have to put in, yes. So, with the Surface, you go to our website, you click on the PDF, and you save it to your desktop, and you're done. And then you open it up and do whatever you want to do with it. I think it's a better, even the, the web interface today is better than Dropbox, because, you know, what are we trying to secure? You know, the agenda is a public document.
I think it's just easy to get to it, you know, like...
Well, Dropbox, you have to log in, so there's another set of usernames and passwords you have to remember to get into the Dropbox, if you're using the secure version.
Yeah, but you could, yeah, you could do that.
You're not using the secure version.
Then you could just pick it up.
Yeah, you just double-click on it, away you go.
But Mike, we could also just, we could just email the PDF to them, right, and they just, they could save, or download it from their email too, right?
Probably would be the most, because depending on how big the agendas are, I've seen agendas that have been, you know, two hundred megabytes, that have all kinds of drawings and pictures in them, and those are just not going to go through email. You know, the rule of thumb is ten megabytes or smaller for email, and that rule is even kind of creeping up on us. But, you know, going to the website today is probably the most, I think it's the most efficient way to do it, especially on a desktop or Surface device. But we can do both. We can do inbox and we can do, you know, there's lots of options.
Or even like an email, or it's like, if we have the security...
An email with the link embedded in it. You, you get the email, it says, here it is, you click on it and it takes you there. Yeah.
Can you remove your emails as you, as you click on them?
Say that again?
Same system to remove, delete emails, et cetera.
Yes. Yeah, it would be our Outlook system.
What about the extra papers, the charts, graphs, maps, et cetera, plans that we look at? How would you handle that?
If they're large, you know, thirty-six by twenty-four inch, we would have to print them out. If, I mean, if you're wanting a paper copy, because even on a laptop, looking at those larger plans, it's very difficult. Now, one of the things that is coming up that may happen, well, we're planning on having it happen next year, is council chambers are going to get remodeled with like a document imaging screen, so that we can put a large plan down and it'll project on a screen, so everybody can see the same thing, and then you can go over there and mark it up and write it up and do whatever you want. But, you know, today, what we do is we print out everything, right? So, if there's a big plan in there, you get a copy, but there's just no choice. That would probably still be the case for large plans. I don't...
I have, I have a fair amount of experience with large plans, and what, you know, you can either view the whole, the whole sheet on your little, on your little screen, and if you want to, if you want to see different parts of it, then you just, you just blow it up to a hundred percent or a hundred and fifty percent or whatever, and go around the document, and, and then you can really read the detail in the document. So, that's, that's not, not really a problem at all.
Kipling?
No, no. It will, it will give you a clear, you know, in a, in a PDF format, a very clear, clear image and, you know.
And that's something we can work through too. Like, I think Bud's right, some people might have more experience at looking at maps on, on a small screen and, or large documents, and so, those people may not need a hard copy to start with, but until you get used to it, we could, we could still print out some hard copies, but...
I would agree. It's really a user preference thing. It's just, you know, sometimes paper's a little bit easier.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, do we need a consensus on this to go forward?
Yeah, if, if you would like to move forward, we, yes, we would like to hear that. And if, if you like staff's recommendations, um...
I, I think it's, I think it's a good value for us to be able to particularly save the, save the printing costs, and I hope that it would go along with, you know, that that would be part of the thing, is that we don't get packaged, you know, we don't get packages delivered, so we would save the cost of delivery, we'd save the cost of printing, and I would make a consensus that we move forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
I would say as long as we have that understanding that if you do receive one of these, you're not going to get a delivered package, that there's an either, you can't get it delivered and also have this, that there'd be some understanding of that.
A person could individually print their package?
If they should.
Joe's off of the internet actually, off of their regular computer?
Yeah, we can't stop you from doing that.
And I guess one, you know, sort of, I, I would certainly concur with that, and, and one more requirement would be some training, so that we have, you know, we're able to, able to get them up and running and we're, and really to be fully functional.
Anything else? Are we in agreement on that? Any dissenters? Nope? Sounds like we have a going forward on...
Great. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
The last thing is, we need a list of who wants and who doesn't.
I think, everybody, for, yep, I think everybody.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
That's easy.
Easy enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Mike said, here's a couple of documents I'll be bringing to you about.
I have specs and what I think of the Surface Pro.
What's that? Colors? You could... I'll talk to Mike. If you, if you want a specific color, we can, then you can tell them apart at least. You all have to get a different color.
So, the options?
Yeah, we'll send options around for you. We'll do that. He wants the purple, probably.
Mr. Goff, is there another item that I had to address?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation this evening. Hope you're not too disappointed. But we can walk through my memo, and, and Mr. Schultz, our city treasurer, has also provided his quarterly, I think he does it quarterly, don't he, his treasurer's reports, so. But I'll just walk through some highlights of, of the budget report. This is a, a budget report for the six months, first six months of the year, ending June thirtieth, and, and city charter does require that. I provide a, an update and presentation on the sixth month budget review. If you go to the second page, the first chart shows our different revenue classifications and how, how they're coming in based on, on what we projected. So, it's a, it's a pro-rated, pro-rated analysis, again, to determine if revenues are coming in as projected. So, if you, as an example, you look at sales tax, we, when we adopted the budget, we projected just over sixteen million dollars in revenue. On average, oh, based on, on a historic average, we should be, we should have about six point three in of revenue from sales tax by the end of June. The third column, or the fourth column you see is, is what we actually do have in through the end of June, is, is just over eight million dollars. So, we are one point seven million dollars over what we expected to have in by this year. And then, the, the column on the very far right is the percentage. So, we're a hundred and twenty-eight percent of what we projected. Now, there's one big caveat in this, in our sales tax number, sales tax, sales and use tax audits are included in this number, and we had a very large audit this year, which brought in one point seven million dollars. So, a good chunk of that, well, pretty much most of it. Once, when you pull out the, that, that sales tax audit, just general sales tax in general without that, without audit revenue, is up about one point nine percent. So, sales tax revenues are still up when you do pull that out. And then you can go down through the other categories. Everything is, is, is pretty, pretty much up, which is a good news. Our other taxes, use taxes, licenses, intergovernmental. The only two categories of revenues that are not meeting projections are service revenues and fines and forfeitures. They're a little bit down. So, our total general fund revenues are about at a hundred and nineteen percent of pro-rated revenues. So, doing, doing fairly well with our revenues. Our total revenues are about two point one million over what we projected. So, again, if you pull out that one point seven for that audit, you know, we're about three to four hundred thousand, a little bit more than we projected at this time of the year. So, so, good news on that. And then you look at our expenditures at the bottom of the page and, and the top of the next page, kind of do the same analysis for expenditures based on historical averages of, of what we typically spend in each department by the end of June. Most departments are below of what we usually spend. The biggest two departments, Community Development and Parks and Rec, there, there are reasons for that. Community Development, they have a, the Brownfields EPA grant still, and they haven't spent much of that yet. And then, also, in Parks and Rec, they're about four hundred, almost four hundred thousand less than what is expected by this time of the year, and a lot of that has to do with park maintenance and utilities because of the wet spring and cool, cool spring and cool summer, except for today. So, that money's going to probably get used by the end of the year potentially, but didn't have to use as much water and, and electricity so far at the beginning of the year, so we've saved some, some costs there. So, overall, for the general fund, we're at about ninety-six percent of what we expected to spend by, by mid-year. Let's see. Then, the top of the next page, this is just a straight analysis of this year's revenues compared to last year's. It's not, it's not based on what we projected to bring in, but just a straight comparison to last year. comparison to last year. Um, same, same revenue categories, um, you can see that, uh, sales tax compared to last year for the first six months is up about twenty-eight point nine percent, but again, um, a good chunk of that's from that audit. Use, other taxes are up fourteen percent, use taxes up eleven, licenses are down nine. Um, I do have some explanations, um, at the bottom of the page on, on these different categories, which we'll go through. Um, intergovernmental revenue sixteen percent up, services down about fourteen, fines and forfeitures up a little bit, and other up about a hundred and eighteen percent. So overall, in general, our total revenues are up about twenty point six percent, um, but again, that includes that one point seven million for that audit. Um, so licenses, I'll just go through the, the ones that are seeing some decreases. Licenses, um, are down about nine percent. That's primarily due to a decrease in building permits this year. Um, last year, we had, um, extraordinary number of, of building permits by this time of the year. Um, we have quite a few, quite a bit this year too, but, um, last year was just a, a very busy year with building permits, and I think the second half of the year, we're probably gonna, we're, it's probably gonna see an increase in that, some more. Um, service revenues are down, um, about fourteen percent, and that, again, has to do with, um, um, building type activity. Um, our zoning application and plan review, plan review fees are down compared to last year. Again, last year was just a very busy year, a lot of those projects that were seen being constructed today, um, a lot of those started last year, and, and they, they paid their fees last year. Um, so those are kinda the two biggest anomalies there. Um, the last section of, of this report just talks about supplemental budget appropriations. Just wanna make you all aware that, um, we have made some significant, um, budget supplemental appropriations this year, um, and a lot, a big chunk of those are for the, um, Thirty-second and Youngfield widening project. Um, and let's see, we, uh, yeah, the Thirty-eighth and Kipling Development Project, we appropriated a million dollars for that project. Um, we paid down the loan at Forty-fourth and Wadsworth that Jesse Hill, um, mentioned earlier, that was about one point three million dollars, I believe. Um, Thirty-eighth Avenue Corridor, we just appropriated seven hundred and fifty thousand for, um, engineering services. So there's been quite a few, um, large appropriations this year, but, um, if you remember, I think that my year-end update that I gave to you, um, we saw just about a million more dollars, um, that was contributed to our reserves at the end of last year than we expected, so that was helpful. When we paid down the loan at Forty-fourth and Wadsworth, that released about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of money that was tied up, um, as cash collateral, um, against that loan, so that money was released. We had that audit, um, that came in at one point seven million dollars, so we've had some significant amounts of additional cash added to our reserves. So when, when we, I, I looked at all of the supplemental budget appropriations we made so far this year, we're still at, um, we're still meeting our minimum reserves, um, but we're, right now, at about eighteen percent, um, after we've made all of these, these additional payments. So, um, looking pretty good, the trends are up. Um, that's kind of it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have just a quick comment. So, uh, one of the reasons, um, well, actually, it was interesting, because a request was made for this information, um, with the thought that it, it's not out to the public, uh, but it does sound, I mean, we do get this annually, this six-month report, and I think the other thing is, is a timely, uh, we all had on the agenda, the urban renewal report, which was timely, uh, based off of the question, but I think if, perhaps that's the perception and, and because you have to catch the appropriate council meeting to make sure you get this information. Will this be posted on the website anywhere?
It will be, and, and to be fair, we, yeah, I think we've been lacking a little bit in the last, um, year or so of getting stuff updated on the website, so this will definitely be up on the website, um, and the urban renewal port is, and one other thing too, that was mentioned, I think, at a council meeting.
Is the investments?
Um, that too, and Mr. Schultz has an update on that, but, um, the, the CAFER, the two thousand thirteen CAFER, um, we're just finalizing that, um, it's not due to the state until the end of this month, and, um, actually, it's on your agenda for presentation by our auditors, I think your next meeting, um, July twenty-eighth, yeah? Um, but that, you know, CAFER, we don't, we don't close the previous financial year until March or April, um, and the audit is just wrapping up and getting finished, and, um, we're still proofing the final documents, and, um, it should be ready by July twenty-eighth, though.
Thank you. If I, Patrick, if I, um, as I heard what you said was that we're at, at an eighteen percent minimum, our minimum reserve is seventeen percent, we're at eighteen, so we're just one percent over that. But the question I have is, are we in actually no better shape as far as our rodent and maintenance work that needs to be done, capital improvement that we need to be done?
Yeah, correct. Um, we have not, you know, all, most of those transfers we made this year using our reserves were for special projects, um, Thirty-eighth and Kipling, the Forty-fourth and Wads, Thirty-eighth Avenue, um, so they didn't go to our capital budget necessarily. Um, so we still don't have the funds, um, in our general fund reserves to transfer to, for capital, um, annual capital projects.
And what we're transferring to, the supplemental budget appropriations, there are attempts at, um, not attempts, that sounds weak, but there, the, the process is to try to improve our general fund as far as creating economic development.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, I, I think there were wise investments, investments in the community, for sure.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Any other questions?
Larry's got, uh, I think, an update on, on the investments.
Okay, um, I didn't bring extra copies of this, so, um.
It's in their packet.
It's in the packet, if you have the packet. Um, I just did now notice one error on the, on this report, sorry to say, two thousand seventeen, I know we're earning interest on that five hundred thousand dollars, but it is not here, I'll get that corrected, obviously. Uh, in making investments, the top three items are maintaining cash flow for the city so we can pay our bills and not have to, um, pull any investments back early and pay any penalties. Glad to say we've not lost any money, we have not lost or paid any penalties, because we've never had to do that. Uh, when I buy CDs and bonds, I buy new issues and intend to keep them to maturity unless in the case of bonds, they are called. Uh, CDs are all kept to maturity, none of our CDs are callables, so right now, we have a pretty stable investment portfolio. Uh, at other times, it's been more churning going on because of calls of bonds and, uh, that sort of thing. Um, I try, I don't buy bonds that with any more than one possible call opportunity. Uh, some bonds are sold, the interest rate sounds good, but it can be called at any time. And when we did some of that, believe me, they get called at any time, and every other month, you're rechurning that money. So at this time, we don't have that churning going on. Um, we are high on CDs, uh, we have over six million invested in CDs. Those are in both, uh, PDPA, or what we'd call conventional CDs with PDPA banks, and the negotiable CDs, which, um, we got into because our PDPA banks aren't taking money. Uh, today, the five-year CD rate at First Bank is point nine percent, and, uh, our other CDs are, are at higher rates, and lately, bonds have come up to around two percent. So if I had money to invest now, I could get some two percent money. You'll notice I don't have anything yet coming in in two thousand nineteen, so I have not placed any, any funds yet this year, uh, mainly due to the cash flow. Um, we have been able to restore our reserve, that's the two million dollars in liquid savings, that's at Solero National Bank, and they're now paying forty basis points, which compares to the, uh, if you're familiar with them, the, oh, what am I trying to say? The, uh, cooperatives are like, the folks who do just public holdings are paying like twelve basis points now. Um, so Cola Trust is one of those, uh, Sea Safe is another, and that's what they're paying. And that's about what First gives us, um, money in the checking account. Uh, so these are the totals. Uh, the rates have been horrible, we've had to buy, uh, we bought bonds at less than one percent, um, because that's where the rates are. All of this is protected, the bonds are backed up by the US, uh, all of the CDs are covered by FDIC, none of those is over the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. Normally, buy two hundred and forty-five thousand, and that allows for the earnings, on top of that, to stay within the five hu, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximum. Fortunately, we have no experience with FDIC covering anything, uh, and I hope, uh, we never do, that doesn't happen often, um, but that's our situation right now. Uh, we have a little lower in invested funds than, uh, than we have at sometimes in the past, and, um, I'm hoping we'll be able to increase that a bit. Um, so that's the facts, I apologize for that error, I will get that corrected and, and get this out to you.
We do have an investment committee.
We have an investment committee meeting tomorrow. I should mention, um, there has been a change in the CRS pertaining to, um, municipal bonds or special district bonds. Uh, the law says we may not buy those for longer than a three-year period, and the new law says that it has to carry a rating, the top rating with two rating agencies. Uh, that was just passed in the last legislature. Uh, so we are reviewing the account, the, uh, policy, and will shortly be coming to council with that policy as revised. Uh, we'll be, of course, running that through legal and all those things, so, um, that's it.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you mentioned that, uh, the city currently has some funds in, uh, being held by Solero National Bank. Um, is there any concern? I know recently their CEO was fired, or?
We're watching that, yeah. The former CFO is now the new CEO, that just happened. Uh, no, we don't have any reason to be concerned about the funds, uh, they're having a battle over who's gonna run the bank, uh, but it is a PDPA bank, uh, they have funds to, uh, indemnify or collateralize, uh, the money we have with them.
I just wouldn't, I, that.
Well, I understand, and I, I'm not surprised if someone would ask, but we're staying close to that.
Other questions? I guess we're done with that report then, thank you, Mr. Schultz.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Goff, we can move to your staff reports?
Yeah, I have just one quick one. Um, we, we've talked about this a while back. This is a donation request, um, for the Arvada Community Food Bank, Arvada Wheat Ridge Community Food Bank, they should call it. Um, this is their Top Hats and Ball Caps event, which is scheduled for October eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Um, they have contacted me again several times, um, asking if, if, if we'd be interested in, in donating. Um, I think on the second page, there are some different suggested donation, donation levels, but, um, I don't think you're bound by any one of those, but, um, it is, and if you remember, the, the Arvada Community Food Bank just changed their boundaries not too long ago to include the entire city of Wheat Ridge, so, um, this is a fundraiser for, for that food bank. Is there any interest in, in providing a donation to this event?
And, Ms. Wooden? I don't know if you mentioned this before, have we donated to this before, and if so, how much?
I don't believe we have, and I think this may be their first event, actually, this type of event like this.
Patrick, does our Feed the Future Backpack program interface with this group at all? Do, do we get some of the food from the Arvada Food Bank?
We do, yeah.
So are we giving them money from that group? From the Feed the Future? Is that, can we give ten thousand dollars a year from the city, is that, some of that money make it back to this group?
The, the money we give goes specifically to, to Feed the Future, so it, it provides the food for, um, our schools, local schools.
And we're not buying it from them, from Arvada Food Bank? We're not getting it from them?
I think the food comes from them. Yeah, but, but, yeah, yeah, so the funds, but the, this, the Arvada Community Food Bank does more than just the Feed the Future program, um, so I think that this is a fundraising, fundraiser for their entire programming, not just the Feed the Future. But you're right, we do, we do.
I was just wondering if some of the, some of the money we indirectly goes from the Feed the Future program into their food bank, and their money bank, as far as it goes?
Yeah, everything that we give, if we give them, the ten thousand that we've been giving them on an annual basis, um, pays for the food that comes back to our schools' kids.
One of the bullets does say something about backpacking program.
Ms. Davis, you have a question?
Yeah, so I was just wondering, because obviously, this isn't budgeted.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering if this is something, again, that we could each, uh, you know, use some of our outreach funds, I, I'm happy to do so, and, um, I mean, I think, I, I'm not sure about the event, but, you know, sometimes it's, you know, the cost of the event and having people there and giving them money for, to feed us and, you know, for the event part of it, that maybe we could even give, close that amount just in money and not the event.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm certainly happy to give something from my fund, uh, but we could also, I, I mean, since now this bank is going to feed our citizens as well, maybe we oughta step up more, uh, with more than just our own individual funds, what do you think?
Yeah, Mr. Giachilio?
Um, my funds are pretty low right now, so I wouldn't be able to contribute to my public outreach, but I wouldn't mind, based on Mr. Fitzgerald's suggestion, a thousand or twenty-five hundred from the city. It'd be a budget amendment, but I think it's worth it, because I don't wanna be a peer, like, in isolation of city, I mean, this, this group does support Wheat Ridge, Arvada, it's, we're all a community, and so if we go a thousand or a twenty-five hundred budget amendment, I'd be okay with that, I just don't have any more to give from my public outreach.
Mayor, they, I did receive a note too, from, um, this organization, they said, they've also submitted a grant proposal to the Colorado Health Foundation for a three-year grant to fund Head Start in Wheat Ridge and Arvada with weekend sacks of food. Um, they said if they get that funding, it will free up funding for the Feed the Future Backpack Program, so that we may be able to pick up another, another school in Wheat Ridge, so, just some information.
Which we were trying to do.
So, the council be okay with a thousand or twenty-five hundred?
So we're looking, the, the idea is that, uh, the city would provide a thousand or twenty-five hundred, and then individuals could add to that as they wanted to, is what I'm hearing. Mr. Fitzgerald, did you have something you said?
I was, I, I'd like twenty-five hundred more than I like a thousand, yeah, but I'm not gonna be here next week, so, it's up to you guys.
Ms. Davis?
I think that.
Ms. Wooden?
I, I too would support the budget amendment for twenty-five hundred, because it, it will come back to the community, and it sounds like if they get that grant, it would come back to support other programs within our city, so.
Mr. Urban?
Have they already applied for that grant, or are they in the process of?
They have, so they don't know yet, yeah, they, they're waiting to hear.
I was hoping that by our commitment to donate a certain amount of money, that that would help for.
Said they just submitted, so maybe they can.
So, I'd be in favor of the twenty-five hundred.
Sounds like it, I, I personally toured, toured the Arvada Food Bank, it's a very, very worthwhile cause, a lot of volunteers doing a lot of good work there. So we look like what we're doing is a budget amendment of twenty-five hundred dollars plus anything additional that any council member would like to give, please notify Mr. Goff, since Janice is out of town right now, would that be okay? We say within the next week, so we have a total amount that we know about. Is that good?
That's good, thank you very much, they'll be happy.
Okay, any, see, that was staff reports, nothing else on that one?
Nope.
Electoral officials' reports. Let's just go around the table. Larry, do you have anything else? No? Mr. Urban?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Giachilio?
Just wanted to thank Teller Street Gallery last night for hosting the Feed the Future program, uh, it's good seeing some council members, elected officials, mayor, and then also, we had a lot of community support, so thanks to Teller Street Galleries on Thirty-eighth Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing.
I will just echo my fellow councillor from District 1 to thank Teller Gallery and all of the citizens who worked hard to, to put the Feed the Future Program together yesterday. It was a great, great time and I think it made some, some good funding for that well-deserved program. Thank you.
No, Bud, but one of Pilates out of the door, I thought you'd be at your Pilates after, after tonight.
Sounds like that's it. Oh gosh, there's so much going on, but we're going to meet, close the meeting at 7:30 tonight. We're adjourned.